Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. I'd like to welcome the Boy Scout Troop 761, who is going to post our colors, and then I will lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
... by the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, prepared post colors. Post colors.
That's Boy Scout Troop 761, let's give them a hand. Nice job, boys. Item three is a roll call. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here. Item four is requests for any continuance or any public hearing item. We have none. And before we get into special presentations, I want to take a moment to acknowledge a retiring city executive. Steve Brogdon is our Library Services Director. Steve has served the city for over 24 years, 14 as the library director, and before that, he was the deputy library director. Steve's had numerous accomplishments over his tenure here at the library, just to name a few. He spearheaded the renovation and the opening after the Northridge earthquake in 1994, and he was the catalyst and the overseer of the new 22,000 square foot children's library, which opened in 2006. Steve has served the city well. I saw him today, actually, going into Whole Foods, and I congratulated him for his years of service, and I mentioned to him that this look on my face was one of envy, because he's retiring and we're not. So with that, let me introduce our city manager, Scott Mintik, to say a few words about Steve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community here. So this week, as the mayor was indicating, is a both a happy and a sad time for us. Happy in that we acknowledge the outstanding service of a stellar library services director, and sad because we have to announce the retirement of a stellar library services director. But you've been with the city for about 20 years, is that right?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years, and rising from a deputy director to interim director, and then permanent director, and you've been in that role for about 14 years?
Fourteen.
So we've sort of worked together that whole time. So Steve has done a lot of great stuff, but I think one of the more interesting and exciting things that he worked on was the expansion of the library to include the 22,000 square foot children's addition. That was really your pride and joy, I think. Second only to all the people you got to work with at the library. So Steve's been an outstanding member of the executive team, been very helpful to the city council to help you realize your dreams and your vision with respect to the library system here in Thousand Oaks. And as we all know, it really is second to none for cities in our size, you know, save from 100 to 200,000 population. It looks as good today as it did when the place first opened, and that same is true for the branch. So on behalf of the city and the executive team, we're going to miss you. Steve is going to have his send-off party on Thursday, so we'll get into more details at that time. Steve, outstanding job.
Thank you.
And do you want to say anything to?
Absolutely.
I'm sure he does.
Do I get one minute per year?
Less is more. Brevity is king. Okay, but thank you. You'll be missed.
Thank you so much to the council, to the staff I worked with. I think the word that comes to mind, and I'll steal this from Mary Jane Lazz when she left, is gratitude. Gratitude to the council for their support, gratitude to the library staff for all their hard work. They're the ones who make it all happen. Gratitude to our support organizations, the Friends of the Library, the Thousand Oaks Library Foundation. Toni Agolpian is here tonight, and she was on the oral board that interviewed me when I applied for the deputy director position. And once I found out there was going to be some acknowledgement tonight, I asked her to be here, so I'm delighted to see her. Just gratitude all around to the community. It's just been, it's been a great ride. Twenty-four, I never thought I'd be anywhere for 24 years, and I'm delighted that it's worked out that way. And again, I thank the council, I thank the community for their support, and look forward to greater support for the library. So thank you very much, and you haven't seen the last of me, but thank you very much.
Very good. Steve, congratulations on 24 years, and we wish you the best of retirement, and I'm sure you'll stay active in the community. Good for you.
Thank you very much.
We now move to our special presentations. Tonight, our first presentation is to ourselves, to the city of Thousand Oaks. Since our last council meeting, we celebrated our 50th anniversary for the city, October 7th, 1964. The city had its incorporation, and we had various dignitaries that we like to recognize that are here with us this evening. We have Amanda Brogie from the Assemblyman Jeff Gurrell's office. Is Amanda here? Come on up. Bob Huber, our friend and neighbor, mayor of city of Simi Valley, Bob, come on up. Joe Gibson, who's the chair of the Caneo Recreation Park District, longtime supporter of TO Youth Baseball, just all-around good guy. Jim Friedel, general manager, the Caneo Recreation Park District. And I believe Congresswoman Julia Brownlee was supposed to be here. Is she here? Oh, she's right there. Come on up. I didn't see you. She would have announced you first. Our Congresswoman is here. Before we begin the presentations, also want to acknowledge Senator Fran Pavly from the 27th Senate District. She was not able to attend tonight, but has sent a congratulatory wishes to the city, and would like to attend our future meeting personally congratulate the city on the 50th anniversary. Additionally, the city of Westlake Village was unable to attend tonight. As most of you know, they have their council meetings on Tuesday night, as we do, and they are also providing a plaque of congratulations. So we move forward with 50 years of cityhood. And with that, let's start with our Congresswoman, right here, from Washington, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here, and Mayor Fox, and where did Mayor Fox go? Mayor Fox, and Mayor Pro Tem Adam, and council members, it is truly an honor to be here with you this evening, as we come together to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the city of Thousand Oaks. And this is a momentous milestone for both the city of Thousand Oaks and for all of us who are lucky enough to live here. I'd like to especially recognize, really, all of you and your leadership, because it is your leadership that has really fulfilled, I think, a wonderful, wonderful vision of our city. And also, I think we always need to thank the staff that has worked so diligently to pay tribute to our community's history and heritage by organizing this golden anniversary celebration. I'd also like to extend my sincere appreciation for the work that they have done and continue to do to make Thousand Oaks the wonderful place it is, and one of the most desirable places to live in all of California. Since 1964, Thousand Oaks has had many, many stewards, including all of you, who have worked hard to maintain the city's healthy growth and development, all while conserving and incorporating the natural beauty that surrounds the city with miles and miles of trails for walking, hiking, and biking, in order to take in all of the breathtaking views and vistas that we are so fortunate to have here. And we can't forget, one of the city's greatest gems, I think, is the Civic Arts Plaza, which offers, as you all know, the very best and world-class entertainment for the entire region. So I feel very, very lucky to live here. So in recognition of the city's 50th anniversary, I would like to present to the city council a copy of a statement that has been entered into the congressional record back in Washington in commemoration of today's celebration. And I don't know if I'm taking too much time, but I just want to say, just a partial of this is, the city of Thousand Oaks was incorporated on October 7th, 1964, and was named for the beautiful and bountiful oak trees that are a hallmark and symbol of the city to this day. And over the last five decades, the city of Thousand Oaks has grown into an exceptional and premier community that has been recognized for being one of the most desirable places in all of California to live, and to work, and to recreate, and to raise a family. So it is my greatest, greatest privilege and pleasure, Mr. Mayor, to give you this in honor of the work that you do for our community, and to celebrate 50 years of the city of ... thank you.
Or take a little photo.
Very good.
Hi, good evening, everyone, council members and staff. It's an honor to be here tonight on behalf of Assemblyman Gurrell to commemorate this incredible milestone for the city of Thousand Oaks. This is such a beautiful community, such a wonderful place to live and play and work and get an education and raise a family. And that can all, in great part, be attributed to the quality of leadership that has served at the helm of this community for the last 50 years. This city has kind of grown up with a grace and dignity about it that is hard, hard to find, and that you don't see very often over the course of a city's 50 years in existence. So I just want to congratulate everyone here, and thank all of you, and those that came before you for your diligence and your, and your hard work, and for keeping a vision for this city that has made it the special place that it is today. So on behalf of Assemblyman Gurrell and the California State Assembly, I would just like to present the city of Thousand Oaks tonight with a certificate of recognition in honor of its 50th anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you for inviting me here this evening. It's indeed a privilege and a pleasure to be here, representing the city council of Simi Valley. In my last four years as mayor, I've had the opportunity to work with all five of you council members, whether it be in our mayor's city managers' meetings, or V-COG, or other events. So I know you're all a class act, because I've firsthand worked with you, and I've really enjoyed that. And so it brings me a lot of joy to be here on behalf of our city council. And we have a resolution signed by all five city council members, which really says how we feel. So if you'll indulge me, I'm going to, but I'm not going to hold it. I have it written here. I'm going to read it to you with a lot of joy. Whereas the city of Thousand Oaks is celebrating its 50th anniversary of incorporation on October 7th, 2014, and in recognition of its progress and growth through these years, deserves special recognition. And whereas Thousand Oaks began as a small settlement, first with a post office, then as a stop on the stagecoach routes between Los Angeles and San Francisco, and has since grown into a premier city, not only in Ventura County, but in Southern California. Whereas on September 29th, 1964, voters decided to incorporate and elect elected as its first city council, Lee Williams, Robert G. Tally, John D. Tapking, David F. Betts, and Alex T. Fiore. With Robert G. Tally serving as the city's first mayor, the city council began the progress of governing its nearly 20,000 citizens on October 7th, 1964. Whereas over the past 50 years, the city of Thousand Oaks has grown from 14.28 square miles and nearly 20,000 residents to the time of incorporation, to 56 square miles, and run 127, 557 residents today. And whereas the city of Thousand Oaks has successfully maintained its natural environment, and has more than 15,000 acres of open space, and has become a progressive and innovative city comprising a blending of cultures, ages, interests, and backgrounds, creating the sense of community and pride felt by citizens of all ages. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Simi Valley, that it takes great pleasure in congratulating and commending the city of Thousand Oaks upon the 50th anniversary of its incorporation, and applauds the city for the outstanding contribution it has made to the history of California. Congratulations, best wishes from our city council. We're very proud to be your neighbor and your sister city. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you, Mayor Andy, members of the council. I'm a little underdressed, but I do represent the park board, so casual is good. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to congratulate the city, our younger sister city, as the park board celebrated our 50th anniversary last year, on 50 years. It is truly an achievement, and one that didn't come without a lot of work, a lot of effort, not only by this council, but members of the council and all members of the community before us. I'm a recent addition to the community. I've only been here 26 years. But I'm proud of this community, and the things that we do together. I think some of the relationships and partnerships that we have between the park district and the city, some examples, the Hillcrest Center for the Arts, the Global Adult Center, the Alex Fiore Teen Center, and one that I have the pleasure of serving with Mayor Andy and Claudia on, the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency, really epitomizes what we're about. It's working together for the betterment of the whole community. And with that, and Jim Friedel, our general manager is here, where's Jim? We take pride in being your sister agency here in the Caneo. So congratulations on your 50th. We hope to be back for your 100th, and whatever it takes. I may not be here, Jim might. But again, thank you very, very much.
Not read the entire?
It's pretty long, I got to read this.
Let's get everybody, get everybody up for council. Let's get a big, big photo. Our next special presentation, I want to invite up our Deputy Public Works Director, Cliff Finley. Cliff's going to give us an update on the 10123 construction project. Cliff, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, council members. Bridgework is continuing on the corridor at Moore Park, Caneo School, and Hampshire over crossings. And the retaining wall work, mostly on the northbound side, is continuing. You drive by that every day. There will be continued to be nightly ramp closures at Moore Park and Hampshire interchanges. They will be continuing off and on, nine to six, for the next several weeks. An important thing I want to update you on is the northbound Hampshire Road and the northbound Moore Park Road will be closed under the bridge for two nights next week, 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It'll either be Monday or Tuesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday. You probably should go to the website, www.toaks.org/10123, for up-to-date information on those closures. At the last meeting, there were some questions regarding the public outreach that has been done. Currently, our email blasts are going out to 1,500 residents, and since May 2014, that number has actually increased by about 25%. Our records show that about 50% of those emails are being opened, so we are getting the word out. What I've been told by our public outreach consultant is 30% is a good number, so they are being read. We've also contacted over 300 businesses along Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Hampshire Road, up to date. Just a quick report on the accidents. Accidents are down. They were down in July. They're still lower than they were in August, and we don't have the September numbers yet. The peak was in June. However, Caltrans is adding additional signage, advanced warning sign, on all of the on-ramps within the project area to remind people of construction ahead and the reduced speed limit. So we're hoping that that continues to have a positive impact. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the 10123? Since you're on a roll, why don't you just roll right into the Herb's Road improvement?
Yes, sir. The Herb's Road project, we continue to have challenges, but we are making progress. All the utility and construction easements have been obtained, and all the underground conduit has been installed. In fact, today, we reached a milestone. Southern California Edison was onsite, and are beginning their work to start the undergrounding cable installation. That's anticipated to take about two months. They have to install all the underground cables, they have to remove the existing cables, and re-energize all of those houses with their new services. Expect to be done in mid-December, with the poles being removed before the first of the year. Immediately following that work, our contractor will go back in, complete the paving and draining work, and all the sidewalks, and complete the project. So we expect it to be done early in 2015. The project team is committed to completing the project as quickly as possible, and we continue to appreciate all of the residents and the public's patience. We understand this project has been going on for a while, and it has an impact. The project is starting to take shape, and it's going to be really nice when it's completed. Adam, you're free for any questions.
Cliff, what kind of community outreach are we doing with the residents? I know we, do we have periodic meetings, I mean, and mailings? I mean, how do we let them know in a timely, in a timely way what's happening?
So the residents that live on the street, we actually are in contact with them almost daily because of the impacts to them. The rest of the community... The rest of the community, we are continuing to update the website and talk about it with everybody who we can, the newspaper as well as any other agencies we can.
All right. Any questions for council? All right, thanks. All right, that concludes our special presentations. We'll move on to item six, that's public comment. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment for tonight's meeting, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council on the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Eight people have presented cards. And pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. As I call your name, please walk up to the podium, the next person in line, if you're up there, maybe you can work your way down to one of the lower seats and it flows very smoothly that way. Our first speaker is Doug Tapking. Following Mr. Tapking will be Rick Cantor, and following Mr. Cantor will be Mr. Billy Martin.
Good evening, council members and staff. Tonight I come to you in a little different fashion. Coming to you is Douglas Tapking, a 51-year resident of the city of Thousand Oaks. We moved here in 1963 before the city became a city. And as most of you know, at this particular point, my father was on that first city council. Those people, Bob Tally, John Tapking, Alex Fiore, Dave Betts, and Lee Williams, were young men. No one was over 40 when this city was formed. I graduated from Thousand Oaks High in '67, first class, opened in '63. Many of the things we're celebrating tonight as a result of those 50 years were only dreams at that time. Many names are to be remembered. And the theme for the parade that is going to happen this Saturday, and by the way, that's going to be the largest parade that I remember in the history of Thousand Oaks, remembering the past and honoring those memories. And you will have council members and mayors from all generations there. Plus, all the schools will be sending students and staff, et cetera, to attend. But remember names like Glenn Kendall, city manager, Tex Ward, from the Parks District prior to our individual, who formed much of what went on in this area. Grant Brimhall, whose hand is seen in much of what we see today. You think about Jungleland, Jan's Road, the Jan's Marketplace, the Oaks. Why was the Oaks put in? Very simply, we got tired of driving to the Espinade. We didn't want to have to go into Los Angeles to go shopping. The Jan's Mall was the first mall in the area, and it's been revitalized so many times I've lost count. In '63, those brave souls who set up the form of this city walked, as has become our history, every street in this community. And I'm a proud member of that family. My family's still revised here. My children have gone to school here. My grandchildren go to school in this area. I have college graduates from CLU, and I remember the days when they were, in fact, chicken coops. I also remember Moore Park when we, as city council members and community volunteers, built the block wall that went down the street. And as we tried to get communities to participate within that. So it's a proud time for you, and you should be proud. We, as a community, should be proud. 50 years, what a wonderful time. Don't forget those who made it so. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Doug. Well said. Rick Cantor. Following Rick will be Billy Martin.
Mayor and city council, I'm gonna give up my time for one of the directors of the Grossman Burn Foundation. He'll be speaking in a couple of speakers.
Okay, it doesn't really work like that, so what do you want to do? You want to speak, or?
No, I'm gonna wait for him to speak.
Okay, very good. Hey, Rick, does he have a card in?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. Billy Martin. No relation to the Yankees.
That happens to be my real name, though, and it wasn't his. My name is Billy Martin, and I am a Thousand Oaks lover. I'm hoping to see most of you Saturday, not watching the parade, but riding in it. I hear there are going to be 17 past and present mayors. I hope you're including Al. I mean, he's right on the cusp. I will be out there with the Quanians, working the streets, trying to keep some sort of order to the march. I will take a picture of all of you for the city's 2015 calendar. I'd also like to include a list of all Thousand Oaks mayors as an honorarium. However, it seems that the 2015 calendar is not on the city's plans, yet. I feel that we should not only commemorate the 50th anniversary as we did with the 2014 historical calendar looking back, we should also show the city looking forward. Speaking of which, I would like to acknowledge the city staff behind Visioning 2064. Great job. I got something out of each one. A lot of PowerPoints and presentations were spawned by that effort. In fact, Mark Town took some great photographs of open space, and this calendar would let the city see those pictures for the first time. Plus, we would include the Visioning logo. Here is a cover shot I took featuring our newest valley oak with some heritage beauties in the background. Part two of the set would be a wonderful keepsake of this year of celebration and election. I'll start assembling it today. Actually, I already have, and we can go to press as soon as the election results are in. I am the right one to handle this. I have sent dollar figures and concept visuals to Drew Powers. He knows how to reach me. Incidentally, the 2015 calendar could be used as a fundraiser for oak tree restoration and preservation. Maybe we could even get a sponsor like Waste Management, or simply make it another nice thank you to the city on celebration of its 50th anniversary. Thank you all.
Thank you, Billy. Nellie Cusworth. Following Ms. Cusworth would be Senora Rodriguez de Lorenzo.
My name's Nellie Cusworth, and I'm from the city of Thousand Oaks. I'm a representative of the Historical Society, which we have something in common, because this is also our 50th anniversary. And we are having a wonderful presentation called Voices of Old Caneo. And it'll be at the Stagecoach Inn. It was last weekend, and it's also this weekend. Now, you know, we didn't become such a wonderful city. It didn't just rise out of nothing, as the wonderful gentleman before us talked about. There were a lot of people who were here before we were, and they gave us the foundation of this not just best city to live in in California, I will speculate the best city to live in in the world. I've been here for 35 years, raised my five children here, and we have never once regretted coming to live in this place. And I am very proud to be a member of society that's trying to keep this history alive, that we can remember those that came before us. So I'm hoping that you will all like to come out to our presentation of Voices of Old Caneo, where you'll meet such notables as Egbert Newberry and his wife, who Newberry Park was named after. Unfortunately, they had to leave after a few years because of a drought. You might also meet Maggie Parker, who was the first schoolteacher of Caneo School, which I believe that property may shortly be sold, and that school may no longer be here, even though I believe it is perhaps the oldest public building we have. Maggie Parker will be on hand. You'll be meeting Robert Miller, who was the first, who was the first veterinarian here and who also established the Caneo Valley Veterinary Hospital. Many such notables, but I want you tonight, in person, to meet Maria Rodriguez de Lorenzana, whose father was the, one of the first landholders here under a Spanish grant of the Rancho de Caneo. This is, oh, and before Mrs. Lorenzana comes, it is this Saturday at the Stagecoach Inn, and we have tours starting at 4:20, 5 o'clock, 5:20, on and on. Go to our website, get tickets, and be there. And I do have complimentary tickets for the mayor and the council members. Mrs. Lorenzana.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maria Rodriguez de Lorenzana. I thank you very much for letting me practice the English I am just learning. My father, as this lady explained to you, was a soldier when they built the Presidio in Santa Barbara. And when he finished to work there, the government of Spain gave to my father and his best friend, Jose Polanco, all of this beautiful valley with the conejos hopping all over. You know conejos, not little bunnies, big rabbits, yes. So my father knew, he must come here and build a place to live, must have somebody living here, and must make some kind of productivity here. So he borrowed some money, he buy many carros, he come with two vaqueros so they can watch the cattle, and he come from Santa Barbara to see they do a good job sometimes. When my brother, Jose de Jesus, is old enough, he come here, build his own adobe, and he be the supervisor as they have more and more cattle, more and more. Now, I married, and I had two little children. I say to my husband, you know, maybe not so good to stay here in Santa Barbara, there's too much noise, too many horses running around, maybe more nice and tranquilo to go live out there. So we go to our valley of the conejos. Oh, it was very difficult, I must tell you. We had to build the adobe, we had to make the adobe bricks. The children, they love to run around, mess in the mud, but not easy to clean them up after. So our life was very, very beautiful. We love to live here despite, despite the hard work. I have a pretty little vegetable garden and beautiful flowers growing, so very nice. But many things happened. One thing happened is Mr. Polanco never, never come to this valley. He never build the adobe, he never make the business. A man in Santa Barbara, Capitan de la Guerra, he learn about this. So he go to the Spanish government, and he say, I want to have the grant from this man who never come, Polanco. You know, Polanco, somebody tell me, in Mexico City is a zona called Polanco. I wonder if that's where my father's good friend is now. So this Mr. de la Guerra come out here with four sons, and then we begin to have so many problems. If you want to know about all the problems we have, please come Saturday or Sunday, and I will tell you about the so many problems that we had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Joan Edwards. Following Ms. Edwards will be Leanne Nemroff. Good evening, Ms. Edwards.
Hello, city council. My name is Joan Edwards, and I live in the 91361 zip code area, Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, I guess is more like it. Anyway, I'm here tonight because I know that you're gonna be in the supplemental next, naming some people that you've decided so far should be on the Tree Committee, Citizens' Tree Committee, which I'm so grateful has been finally, and I think it was Jack, well, I'm not supposed to say, it was one of the women on the council, is that okay? That first suggested a Tree Committee, a Citizens' Tree Committee, because I think that this might be something that we should consider an ongoing committee, like the Planning Committee, something that shouldn't expire, because I hope this city has learned a lesson here, that they never want to live through something as tragic as what's happened the last five months again. It's just day after day of really bad things happening at the Regency Center in Westlake Village. And what I would like to say is that, and I hope I don't have to come back and complain about this anymore, I feel like, oh, they're starting to treat the trees better, and then I go, and they're trenching all the roots, leaving them exposed. Just today I was there, there's still two young oak trees that have their tree, their roots trenched, and they're just out in the open. This cannot possibly be good for oak trees, to have roots just exposed like that. One of the three, they finally did cover up with dirt, well, good for them. But I feel like this has been month after month of Regency Center, which they are a very rich corporation, they sold $250 million worth of bonds, they have shopping centers across the United States, several of which they're also fixing up, greening up, like our shopping center. I'm wondering how those people are coping with it all. But I feel like they're just thumbing their nose at us and just with an attitude of, oh, these silly, sniveling people complaining about their trees being killed. There's some very old trees that are dying now because they've had their trees trenched. If you look on the map, you'll see several are dying now. Number 27 is three-fourths dead, number 28 is 99% dead. The tree, the huge tree, 54, right by the Natural Cafe, looks terrible. So, you know, they just look like they're dying. So I'm hoping that they don't die, but I feel like Regency could care less if they die, because it's almost as if that was their plan to begin with, to kill the trees, unfortunately. So I guess mainly I wanted to just say that I hope that you'll consider continuing with the Tree Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Leanne Nemroff. Following Ms. Nemroff, our last speaker is Marcus, looks like Whitborn. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council members. My name is Leanne Nemroff. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for the past 46 years. I'm here to speak in favor of item, the recommendations, one and two for item 10A. I'm currently chairperson of the Caneo Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council, but I'm not here to speak on behalf of myself. I'm here to speak on behalf of the advisory council, the 1,000 volunteers in our program currently, and also on behalf of all the senior citizens in our city. As you well know, volunteerism plays a significant role in keeping seniors healthy, active, as well as providing a sense of worth and accomplishment. In addition, our volunteers provide service in over 60 stations in our community, including the Civic Arts Plaza, Thousand Oaks Library, Meals on Wheels, I won't tell you all 60, volunteers in policing, as well as in our schools. Last year, these CSVP volunteers contributed over 200,000 hours throughout our community. And if we use the estimation that's given nationally for what a volunteer's hour is worth, that would be over $5.5 million just last year to all the organizations in our community. CSVP was established over 40 years ago, so I'm a teacher, so if you have 1,000 volunteers a year, that's over 40,000 individuals who have come over the course of the last 41 years. If each of those volunteers averaged just 100 hours, and we have many who do 1,000 hours, that would be over 4 million hours of service to our community. There's lots more we can do, so I'm asking you to please approve the recommendations as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Marcus Whithorn. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you. Council members, I appreciate the platform. I'd like to preface my statement by saying as a lifelong TO resident, I'm thankful to the city for providing an environment with such great education and surroundings that have allowed me to parlay a very terrible burn injury into being able to go to work every day, loving what I do. I come before you as the Director of Development for the Grossman Burn Foundation, the philanthropic arm of the Grossman Burn Centers. It is my pleasure to announce that we will be hosting our first annual SoCal Burn Ride in partnership with Firefighters Quest for Burn Survivors. The ride takes place in Calabasas. It's a five-stop poker run with two stops being Fire Station 33, right across from Lake Sherwood. Sherwood, and the fourth stop being TO Power Sports, right here on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The ride takes place on September 28th, and those two stops that I mentioned, we are expecting riders to make their way through in between 11:30 and 1:15. So, on behalf of my friend Rick Cantor here, who's a Glendale City firefighter, we'd love to invite you to come on out this Sunday to participate and help get the word out and raise some money for burn survivors here locally.
Marcus, give us the details again, the date, the time.
Yeah, so I have a little flyer here, but the ride begins at 10:00 a.m. at the Sage brush Cantina in Calabasas. We make our way down to the Rock Store, which is off of Mulholland Highway, and down through Malibu, where we'd make a stop at Vintage Grocers, and that's where we circle back up around through Petrero, I believe, and make our way to Fire Station 33 onward to TO Power Sports, and we loop back around and end at the Sagebrush Cantina, where Dr. Peter Grossman will kind of bring everybody home, you know, talk about, you know, probably talk about his late father and the impact he's had on this community, and what he's done for burn survivors, and what, you know, we continue to try and do every day.
All right, we'll make sure we get that on the website.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marcus. Sure, Joel?
Marcus, excuse me, could I ask, what time do you anticipate arriving at TO Power Sports? Should the public want to come out?
Mind you, we're going to be sending riders out in waves, so we kind of expect them to start arriving at TO Power Sports in between 12:15 and 1 o'clock. So, we want to try and get everybody out of TO Power Sports by 1:15 at the latest. So, I'd say, you know, we'll be there, volunteers will be there, we have, you know, numerous, few sponsors that are going to be there from about 10:30 onward, so there's a nice little window to come stop by.
Thank you, I'll see you out there.
Great.
All right, that concludes our public comments for this evening. We'll move to item 7, that's our consent calendar. Any items council would like to call special? Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Item 7C, please.
Okay, 7C, like in Cat. Any others? Mr. Adam.
7E.
7E, like in Edward. Any others? All right, hearing none, need a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. Mr. Adam. Mr. Adam moves for the balance of the consent calendar discussion. Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title for 7I is an ordinance admitting the municipal code relating to official zoning maps, G7, and changes in classification of property located 2650 Willow Lane, zone change Z 2009-70408, applicant FN Commercial LLC.
All right, that is approved. We'll start with item 7C, Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. I just wanted to direct council's attention to the supplemental packet here this evening regarding item 7C. Mr. Price, Councilmember Price and I are recommending some changes to the committee, and I wanted the council to be aware of that, and that will be on the October 14 agenda.
Okay.
And with that, I move approval of the nominees for the Oak Landmark Tree Review Committee appointments.
All right. Ms. Bill de la Pena moves 7C, discussion. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Item 7E, Mr. Adam.
Mayor Fox, I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks and the City Council, I wanted to thank Ms. Antoinette Hagopian, who I believe is here in the audience, for her generous contribution of $20,000 for the creation of a statue that will be called Reading Together, it's of two young children reading, that will be placed in front of the Thousand Oaks Library, and she has done this in memory of her husband, who was very involved in our community, Michael Hagopian. So, Ms. Hagopian, thank you very much for your contribution, and we appreciate it very much, and it's very nice in memory of your husband.
All right, thank you, Mr. Adam. Do you want to move?
I do move for 7E.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 7E, discussion. Vote, please.
There is a revised recommendation in your supplemental packet. That passes 5-0.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fox. All right, item 8 is public hearings. We have none scheduled for this evening. 9, department reports, we have none scheduled for this evening. Item 10 is the committee commission and board reports. 10A is the recurring annual contribution to Cano Senior Volunteer Program. And I believe Nick is here, Fatheringham, Nick is the Chair of the Cano Senior Volunteers. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name's Nick Fatheringham, and I'm the Chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. On behalf of the Council on Aging, I'm here tonight to seek your support for the Cano Senior Volunteer Program in the form of $10,000 in recurring support. Government agencies and nonprofits have relied on CSVP for 41 years to provide volunteers that enable numerous programs that enrich the lives of residents of all ages. The Council on Aging recognizes that perhaps the greatest benefit of all is the fulfillment experienced by those seniors who volunteer. The staff report describes in detail the loss of $58,000 of grant funding that has led to this request, as well as some of the other efforts to offset this loss. In addition to $10,000 in new funding from the Global Commission, CSVP has increased its fundraising efforts from other sources, such as a Wellness Fest that will be held in January. Volunteers and staffs from both CSVP and the Council on Aging also continue to review available grants that may help support this program. Since funds are being sought, I wish to stress economic case for this support. CSVP is conservatively estimates that their $129,000 annual budget is leveraged into, and I stand corrected by one of the comments we received today, about $5 million in volunteer support. This translates into something on the order of close to $400,000 in support from the $10,000 investment sought from the city, a return on investment that may otherwise exist only in the wildest dreams of loan sharks. From an alternative economic perspective, the cost of staff time to recruit and manage the volunteers that directly support city services would greatly exceed the $10,000 per year if CSVP did not exist. In summary, CSVP is a win-win for Thousand Oaks, providing economic benefit to the city far in excess of its cost, while providing a less tangible but equally valuable benefit to its senior volunteers. The Council on Aging greatly appreciates city council's thoughtful consideration of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions? All right, we have no questions, thank you. We have no cards on this item. It's a pleasure of the council. Ms. Bill de la Pena.
It's my pleasure to move and make the motion on item 7, I mean, I'm sorry, 10A, to help this particular group with additional funding from the city.
All right, Ms. Bill de la Pena moves 10A, discussion. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Item 10B is the annual report of the Youth Commission, and we have Courtney Brusseau, who's the Chair of the Youth Commission. Where's Courtney?
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city members. Staff, my name is Courtney Brusseau, and I'm the Youth Commission Chair for the 2014-2015 year. It's my pleasure to present to you the Youth Commission Annual Report with my fellow commissioners, Letterer and Shaw.
Do we have the PowerPoint?
So, our 2013-2014 year encompassed three main pursuits. The first was successful planning and hosting of our annual events. The second was the implementation of goals set forth in our goal-setting session in September of 2013 based on the youth implementation plan. And third was continuing to provide, was continually providing outreach and education through our televised meetings. Our first annual event is the Therapeutic Dance, which was one of our most beloved annual events, and certainly one of my favorites. We met with the past event guests to select a theme and decided on a rocking sop hop, and we wanted to make sure that they were part of that planning process. It was a fun-filled event, filled with photo ops, a fabulous Grease-themed performance by the Newbury Park High School Choir, and the addition of a vintage car to set the scene. So, we really did have a great time, and it was a great event hosted by, chaired by Commissioner Sauté. The Youth Recognition Awards is one of our core annual events, and it specifically encourages and recognizes volunteerism. This awards program includes several phases, including collecting and reviewing nominations, interviewing candidates, selecting award recipients, and hosting the award ceremony. Last year, 77 candidates were interviewed, and 50 were chosen for awards, and we'd like to specifically thank the Sherforum Theater staff and volunteers, TO TV staff, and Mayor Protem Al-Adam for attending and presenting awards to our students. Every other year, the Commission hosts an annual youth leadership summit. At the summit, teens are invited to engage in a discourse with community leaders to discuss concerns and suggestions, and this year we had 73 youth and 19 community leaders participate in that conversation. Each commissioner was assigned to a table to facilitate, take notes, and report on, and attached to our report is the 2014-2016 Youth Summit Implementation Plan based on those reports, and the written applications and evaluations from leaders and students. Many valuable suggestions came out from our summit, and the Youth Commission is using those goals to develop our, is using those suggestions to develop our goals for this term. And I'd like to specifically take a moment to thank Assemblymember Jeff Guarrel for being there and speaking as our keynote speaker at the event. And next, I'd like to invite up Commissioner Letterer to talk about our summit goals.
Thank you, Commissioner Brusseau. Good evening. My name is Ryan Letterer, and I am the Chair of the Youth Implementation Program. From the Youth Summit, the Commission develops goals for the year, and we invite youth volunteers to participate in the planning and implementation of these goals. Last term, we continued to work on the 2012 Summit Recommendations. The teams under the Youth Implementation Program meet formally once a month, but work on assignments as needed on their own. There are many accomplishments in the 2013-2014 term. The drug, excuse me, the drug and alcohol prevention team partnered with CVUSD Breakthrough Program, Engage Therapy, Straight Up VC, CRPD, and TOPD in hosting additional reality parties and a new social change theater at the teen center. The recreation team co-hosted a One City One Book Teen Game Day based off the novel, The Art of Fielding, with library staff in total, the Thousand Oaks Teen Advisory League. They also hosted an intergenerational youth versus experience sports exhibition in partnership with CLU and Senior Adult Master Plan Recreation Team, where senior citizens competed with youth in swimming and soccer at CLU as part of Grandparents' Day. The team also hosted their third stress-relieving dodgeball event at the fabulous Thousand Oaks Teen Center. The engagement team worked on the City Internship Program, which Chair Brusseau will talk about next. I would just like to thank all the youth and leaders in our community who took the time to come out and support this event, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Letterer. Last year, I had the pleasure of working on an ambitious new project with the Youth Commission, Community Internships Training Youth, or CITY. And in a collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as California Lutheran University, we developed and implemented a six-week summer internship program, which included an educational component. We had 20 students complete the program, along with businesses who believed in the program and found it to be a success and should be offered again. The program would not have been successful without our many amazing business partners, and all of them hosted interns. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Best Western Plus Thousand Oaks Inn, the City of Thousand Oaks Library and Public Works, the Chamber of Commerce, CRPD, Diamond Ground Products, National College Planning Solutions, Sage Publications, the Reserve of Thousand Oaks, Ventura County Credit Union, and our implementation partners, the Cano Youth Employment Services and CVUSD Breakthrough Program, for helping make sure that the first year of the program was a success, and we're looking forward to having another successful year of that program this year. We'd like to especially thank Councilmember Irwin for her inspiration in starting the program, and Professor John Tenachi of CLU, who did a fabulous job in creating the curriculum, and not only taught our students and our interns every Friday during his summer, but barbecued for them as well. In addition to the major events and projects that we've talked a little bit about tonight, the Commission also serves as liaisons to various agencies in the community. We have a liaison on the Teen Center Advisory League and the Thousand Oaks Teen Advisory Board total, and we also assign a liaison to each and every middle school and high school in the community in order to reach out to them in exchange of information. Lastly, the Commissioners have also supported and volunteered other events in the community, such as Visioning 2064, Relay for Life, Arbor Earth Day, Community Consciousness Under One Roof, Mardi Gras Ball, Arts Festival, Children's Art Experience, Senior of the Year, and many, many more. And then, as you know, the Commission has televised meetings on the first Wednesday of each month, October through May, at 6:30 in the boardroom here at the Civic Arts Plaza. Schools and youth organizations are invited to attend and talk about the upcoming projects or accomplishments. We also host a guest speaker on topics of interest to youth, and this year we had six speakers offering insights on entrepreneurship, civic engagement, life lessons, farming and its relation to life, and international business. One of the biggest challenges the Commission has is community outreach, and I'd like to invite Commissioner Shaw up to talk to you about some ways that we're looking to increase our outreach to the community.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Douglas Shaw, and I served as the Commission's Public Information Chair this past year, and will be doing it again this year. We put a lot of effort into our projects, but getting the word out about them requires consistency and persistence. One of the ways we do that is through marketing and social media. We have webpages at www.toaks.org/youth. We utilize traditional marketing techniques such as flyers, posters, and announcements at schools, and we also have a Facebook page, which is Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. Last year, we created a Twitter account @ToYouth and an Instagram account @ThousandOaksYC. We are continually growing our followings by following other pages such as the city, CRPD, the teen center, the arts festival, and other community Twitters. This month, we have been tweeting specifically about Visioning 2064, the arts festival, the parade, and the 50th anniversary open house and reception, along with recruiting for implementation teams. Next month, we will be tweeting about Empowered, a young woman's event at CLU on October 11th. You can also find information and register at empoweredwoman eventbrite.com, B-R-I-T-E. Also, you can find information about the October 15th Prescription Drug and Heroin Conference at the Hillcrest Center for the Performing Arts. If you're interested, please call 805-494-8256. We hope to continue expanding our audience on social media.
Thank you again, Commissioner Shaw and Letterer. Just a few weeks ago, the Commission set its goals for this year, and at that time, we decided on a vision for the year and the programs that will mirror that vision. This year, the Commission voted to do the following for this term: a greater focus on outreach and school involvement, continuing the city internship program, developing three implementation teams in the areas of drugs and alcohol, recreation, and environment, and continuing to implement annual programs and serve as effective liaisons. In conclusion, we recommend that the City Council receive the Youth Commission Annual Report. We would like to thank the City of Thousand Oaks and council and staff, the CRPD, Cano Youth Employment Services, Cano Unified School District, all of our sponsors, donors, and volunteers. All of our partnerships make us successful, and we hope that the Commission continues to be a voice of the youth in the city, because in a democracy, even the youngest deserve a voice. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, nice job. Courtney, questions for either Courtney or Ryan or Douglas? All right, Ms. Irwin, Ms. Jackie Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Actually, I don't have a question, I have a comment. Again, a very, very outstanding year, all three Commissioners, thank you for coming this evening and telling us about all the exciting programs. Just want to say, a couple of our, Courtney this summer spent, he spent the summer interning for Elizabeth Warren, and he has done very many outstanding things in this community. I just want to acknowledge you for that, and especially your leadership on the internship program. It turned out really great, and I think we can build from there. And then, for those of you that don't recognize Ryan Letterer, he was actually in front of the council when he was, what, 11 years old? Because he had written a book, and the proceeds of the book went to benefit many mansions. So, all of you guys are outstanding. We are very, very lucky to have your input. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good job. All right, we need a motion to... All right, we need a motion to approve the report. Mr. Price.
It would give me great pleasure to recommend approval of the report.
All right, Mr. Price moves approval of 10B. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Item 10C is the Community Events Endowment Grant Awards. This is handled by the Cultural Affairs Commission now, and Mr. Mead is going to make the report. He's the committee chair. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. A pleasure again to be before you to give out recommendations for some money. As you know, the Community Events Endowment Fund is a fund that provides $100,000 in funding for cultural, artistic events that occur in the City of Thousand Oaks. And two-thirds of the funding is to be allocated towards arts and cultural purposes, and one-third towards the funding of community activities. And then, it's broken out a little bit more, where $85,000, we, the Cultural Affairs Commission, provides recommendations to you based upon a grant application process, and then $15,000 is kept for off-cycle funding by the City Council themselves. So, this year, we received a total of thirty-one applications for grants, and the total funding that was being requested in those applications was $159,505. The committee reviewed the applications and then made recommendations to the Cultural Affairs Commission as a whole for an award of thirty of the applicants for the $85,000. One of the applicants was denied funding because the request is primarily for fundraising, and it's always been a determination that we're not funding fundraising. And then, also, in your packet, you'll see that there is one off-cycle recommendation being made by us for $1,300 for the Thousand Oaks Girls Softball Association for offsetting of traveling to the state championship in Sacramento. So, the next slide there has the list of the recommended grantees for the grant on there. So, with that, I would recommend to the council, on behalf of the Cultural Affairs Commission, for approval of total funding of $86,300.
Okay, Dave. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Mead? All right, we have no cards on that. Great job. You guys do yeoman's work for the council. We really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Adam.
Yes, I will move all of those recommendations for funding.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 10C. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Item 11 is the successor agency to Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency. We have no report. Item 12 is council issues and recommendations. We have follow-up report on meetings and conferences attended by council members. Mr. Price attended the National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Meeting on September 12th. Mr. Price, do you have a report on that?
Having a little conversation here. Is that on the...
National League of Cities Public Safety?
National League of Cities, not League of California Cities. Yes, I did attend the National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Steering Committee's meeting in Tempe, Arizona, just a few short weeks ago. We continued our discussion on the national level with respect to technology and the data storage. We also got an update on the interoperability issue involving public service, public safety across the nation, and I think it was a very good, very productive meeting. We got a lot out of it, and I'll leave it at that.
All right. Item 12B is the Visioning 2064 Project, and so just a brief report from each individual council member. We'll start actually with Mr. Adam, and we'll work our way through.
Thank you, Mayor. We were in our fifth meeting, and the topic was fiscal sustainability of the City of Thousand Oaks. And we had a very interesting discussion, you know, facing some of the dwindling revenues that the city will be looking at in the coming years. We had a discussion about how important sales tax dollars is to the city, some of the generators of those sales tax dollars, a little talk about the theaters and how to continue to keep them sustainable, and how we can achieve fiscal independence going forward. I want to thank the folks that have come to these meetings. Some of them have been there for all five meetings, and that's quite an accomplishment. So, we'll see you in the sixth meeting and wrap the whole thing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Ms. Irwin? Ms. Jackie Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mayor Fox. So, we had a small group, but a very engaged group, at the streetscape meeting, and we ended up with some guiding principles, which were to create a pedestrian-friendly downtown Thousand Oaks area, focusing on ecologically-minded pavement, citywide uniformity and changes to streetscape, which reflect the unique needs of our area and are appropriate to both urban and rural settings. And then, we talked about the uniformity of street tree canopies and less signage along the streets, adequately managing lighting, and adding calming elements to roadways. Again, a great meeting, and our last meeting is going to be on utilities, which will be October 21st, so I would urge everybody that is interested in utilities to come out and join us.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Ms. Bill de La Pena?
Thank you. The fifth meeting on community and civic engagement took place at the Thousand Oaks Youth Center, Teen Center, I should say, and I wish some of the youth were still here because they did a fabulous job with the help of Francine Spiegel in coming up with guiding principles. We had fifty-two participants, most of whom were students, as young as twelve years old, and they gave us some feedback on what they would like to see over the next fifty years. So, we were actually talking to, really, the next generation. They're the leaders of our city, or might become leaders of our city, and we came up with various guiding principles. And even though the concept may have been a little foreign to the youngest ones, they did an outstanding job participating. I was mightily impressed. And what I took away from that was basically, everybody was concerned about recreation, in terms of the availability of recreation, as well as crime in our city, and we addressed all of those things. So, it was a very, very good meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
Yes, thank you. My visioning meeting was very informative. I learned quite a bit myself. It was presented by Nancy Schramm, so the subject was libraries. Fantastic. There were some good outcomes out of it. I think that one of the things that I thought was interesting is that I had some young people there as well, and those young people had some really good ideas on how we can increase library use by teens. And one of those suggestions involved providing transportation from the three area high schools to the library after school, which I thought, what a great idea that is. So, it's something that I know will be discussed, and I'm looking forward to the next meeting.
And I'm going to actually ask Mr. Towne to make our report. As many of you may remember, during the week of September 16th, half the state of California was on fire. I happened to be at work, and I could not get anybody to cover for me to get out here, so I had to stay in the city of Los Angeles. So, Mr. Towne, maybe you can make the report for us. Thanks for filling in. I heard you did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, City Council. This meeting of the Environment Committee was also very good. We had over fifty visitors from the community, that's excluding staff, and among those, we had a number of students from Lorraine High School, from Thousand Oaks High, and from Oaks Christian. And the topic of last week's discussion was environmental sustainability. We talked about carbon footprints, energy efficiency, and alternative energy sources, and solid waste reuse and recycling. So, it was a great meeting, and as with all the groups, our final meeting is coming up on October 21st, at which time, we will meld that discussion with our previous four meetings, which focused on open space and recreation to form our environmental guiding principles. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Sure. Ms. Bill de La Pena?
As Mr. Price was mentioning, a buzz with the Teen Center that reminded me that the teens in attendance, or the students in attendance during my community meeting, did mention that they would like transportation from the high schools to the Teen Center, to the Oaks Mall, and to have a little trolley shuttle going, kind of like the one for the Canaan Shuttle that helps with Oak Park High School. So, that's definitely something that they're interested in, and I know it's also on our list of goals and objectives.
Thank you. Item 13 is Mr. Minnick's City Manager Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no follow-up from items discussed here at the council meeting tonight. One of the individuals did make reference to a bike race coming up and coming through Thousand Oaks. We'll be sure to put that on the city's website, so members of the community can access it that way. As you heard, there's a parade this weekend, the 50th Anniversary Parade. So, the residents and other interested parties are encouraged to go to the city's website to get more information, but essentially, the parade will go from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, from Duesenberg all the way to Erbs Road. Good viewing anywhere on the Boulevard, especially good along the lakes and in front of the Civic Arts Plaza. So, that's coming up this weekend. It's interesting, the 50th Anniversary Celebration, we did hear from the Historical Society that it's their anniversary as well, and I was just looking through Council mail, and of late, the following groups have made it aware that they're having anniversaries and having celebratory events, the Alliance for the Arts, the Civic Arts Plaza itself, this facility, New West Symphony, twenty years old. The Alliance is twenty, so is this facility. Right on therapeutic horsemanship, they're twenty? Twenty years of age. AYSO, the soccer group for Canal Valley, fifty. Canal Rec and Park District, fifty, and the list goes on. So, we're actually living the vision and dreams of those groups from years ago. Who'd I leave out?
Lorraine High School.
Lorraine High School, fifty years old, right? There you go. And the university turned fifty a couple, three, four years ago. So, we're clearly middle-aged now. Also, with the anniversary coming up, I would like to share with the council that at lunchtime today, I had the honor to have lunch with former mayor, councilmember, longtime fifty-year-plus resident Dennis Gillette and his wife, Terri. They're in town for this week, and they'll be at the parade. So, I did promise him, I let him know that he's here. I invited him to come down and speak at the beginning, but he said he's had his time. So, you'll see him on the weekend. Other things coming up, we encourage the public to go to the city's website, though, because October 7th is, in fact, the official birthday of the city, and we have events throughout that day. And this facility here, the Civic Arts Plaza, is going to be open to the public. We'll have a full open house with tours and other interesting exhibits from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, come out on the city's 50th birthday, October 7th, and that night, in the Civic Arts Plaza Cavalry Lobby from 6:00 to 8:00, there'll be a big celebration reception. And also, that evening, the Time Capsule Ceremony will take place. So, really cool stuff on the 7th. And then, on the 14th of October, the Civic Arts Plaza 20th Anniversary Event that the Alliance for the... No, no, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. Friends at the Civic Arts Plaza will have a reception. So, a lot of stuff going on. More details at the city's website. Next city council meeting will be October 14th, and at this time, we're looking at three public hearings. One involves a forty-five-unit apartment proposal for 1815 and 1825 Los Files Drive. This has already been in front of council for zoning purposes, but now the project moves forward for the next step. And then, staff is recommending one change to the citywide user fees with respect to graffiti removal. And then, we will be doing a Tefra hearing for Cal Lutheran University. They're going to be issuing some municipal bonds for private improvements that they're doing. It's conduit financing, and we're required by law to do this for the university, so that'll be on your agenda for the 14th. And I'm sorry for the long-winded city manager update. I was going to that next. So, I did have it on my notes here. Thank you. The council members reminded me. So, we heard here that the next visioning meeting will be on October 21st, on Tuesday night, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at various locations, and that's the last one. And then, on November 18th, here in the city council chambers, all that work comes together, and then the council will consider their recommendations and make its final recommendations. So, more information on the city's website. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Item 14 is closed session. We have, looks like, three items. Council will be considering a closed session. I don't imagine we're going to make a report, so Ms. Noonan, could you announce those closed sessions?
Sure. We actually have four on this last page. First one is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, West versus City of Thousand Oaks, United States District Court, case number CV144988, CIS AJWX pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98. Next is conference with real property negotiators for property located at 2849 Los Robles Road in Thousand Oaks. City negotiators, John Prescott, Community Development Director, and Tracy Noonan, City Attorney. The negotiating party is Rick Schrader, President of Many Mansions, as the buyer, under negotiation price in terms of sale pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Third matters, conference with real property negotiators for property APN 6730260020, .15 acres on the southern ridge of open space. City negotiators, John Prescott, Community Development Director, and Tracy Noonan, City Attorney. Negotiating party, Tina Raznow, seller, under negotiation price in terms of purchase pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. And finally, conference with real property negotiators for property APN 6760090310, .29 acres on the skyline open space. City negotiators, John Prescott and Tracy Noonan. Negotiating party, Ventura County Treasurer, tax collector, as the seller, under negotiation price in terms of purchase pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. And it is unlikely I'll have anything to report following these closed sessions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. That brings us into our adjournment, and we will adjourn our city council meeting to our regularly scheduled council meeting of October 14th, 2014. Have a great week.